Well, I guess that's what it's going to be, guys. I'm sorry.
Oh, well, that's all right. But we have reached that time. So we will call the special meeting regarding traffic concerns to order at 6:30 PM. If everyone would please rise where you are, where you're at, and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Carrie, if you could have roll call, please.
Certainly. Councilperson Dupree Higgins? Does he still connecting? We'll come back. Ross? I think we lost her. Salsito?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
Elsie?
Where?
I'm still waiting. See, it says that Councilman Higgins is trying to connect to the audio. And then it looks like we lost Councilwoman Ross.
Okay, we'll give it a sec here.
There's Councilwoman Ross.
Okay. Did Councilman Higgins, was he able to connect?
Still looks like he's trying.
All right. Well, I don't want to... When he connects in, we will go there. This is a meeting that's set aside for... Talks about traffic speed enforcement and those things. I think we'll start off with the Chief Raymond Waters, who has a little presentation for us. Since he has taken over our screen, that's what I'm assuming, anyway. So Chief, are you with us?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I can. So I just wanted to deliver a couple of issues that we... Of the Department of Traffic or Speed Complaints. How we can move forward and obviously we'll discuss some questions at the end, but it is very brief. The Department is currently budgeted for 47 officers, including myself. We're operating with 43 officers. We have one on disability, one on light duty, and two vacancies that we've been able to, just unable to fill because we can't find people to work. When traffic complaints come in, they receive mostly by email or phone to relate to the road patrol officers for enforcement. Now, traffic enforcement can only be done when the officers are clear from their calls. Just to give you an idea how busy they are, in the last six months, the Patrol Division has taken over 11,000 calls for service, including burglaries, rassism, assault, narcotic complaints, and weapons. So 11,000 calls over 24 officers. Now, I know I told you we have 43, but you're looking at the Road Patrol Division, right around 24 officers that are responding to 11,000 calls. So during that same six-month period, those same officers issued over 3,000 traffic violations and made over 700 arrests. So our SET program is also assisted with traffic complaints. We assign officers to the complaint areas or our high crime areas. In the past six months, officers have issued an additional 1,200 traffic violations. That's outside of their work. You also have to keep in mind that this was done with the program being shut down a couple of times over a few months due to the COVID pandemic. So after officers get their information on what's going on, is there a traffic problem, is there a speeding problem, is it a stop sign, or whatever it may be, they will later find it back to us. We constantly determine how long should we concentrate in that area. This picture I have up here now is our speed trailer that we have that seems to be a hot topic on where it's at. We stick that out in different areas. Our DPS was good enough to be able to band-aid this back together. It's very old and it's on its last leg currently now. So this is our current roster. If you look at from position A to position F, officers in black to black writing, these are our Road Patrol officers. These are the 24 officers that are going out, taking the 11,000 calls, writing the 3,000 tickets, going out with the 1,200 tickets and that. These are the same officers that we send out on traffic complaints to investigate and to report back to us. If you look down, you know, we don't have another area to pull from because of our bureaus are so low-handed. We really are at a minimum right now. But not only, like I said, is our Road Patrol short-handed, the Detective Bureau is also working short-handed. They're currently working short-handed by two officers. And because we are working within minimum, it sometimes makes it difficult to account for certain facts. Like I said, we don't have any other bureau or unit to steal from to assist with the traffic enforcement.
There's a speaker on the top.
Okay.
It's not tiny, short-handed.
Our DB's already short two officers. It wouldn't be safe to remove anyone from our SCAT unit because they're only a three-man unit. And they've already turned over $145,484 to the city since January of this year. And we're owed another $12,750 from Wayne County. This is all some work that they've done in the last six months. If you remember, our forfeiture account funds our police cars. They have funded them for the past six years. Reducing that manpower will put that unit at a safety grip and would also limit their ability to accomplish what they're doing. So how do we do better? Well, the first thing that we've been looking at is our speed trailer that's outdated. So if you look at this picture, it shows your speed 35 miles an hour. If you notice, it's attached to a parking sign. So we have finally received this new radar sign. And we'll be able to mount it to any sign in the city. And this should really help us do traffic studies because it'll give us measurements of speeders throughout the day and give us a traffic measurement of what's going on in those, at that street or intersection. We have finally received it. It's been on order for probably close to a month and a half when we finally received it. So after we get the software downloaded and everything uploaded, we'll be sending that out and it'll be out and about. So to figure out how we need to do better or where things have made a big turn, we have to look at where we were and where the change started. So back in 2003, you'll notice that there's quite a bit of officers there. And at 2003, we had 61 police officers. Not only did we have 61 police officers, but we also had a traffic bureau of three officers. We had a lieutenant.
What, a lieutenant?
Traffic lieutenant. Oh. We had three officers, one of them being a lieutenant, that would investigate complaints all throughout the week. So like I said, no three, we had 61 officers. Just to give you an idea, the department took 27,280 calls for service. Now, in 2020, which I would actually consider a down year because of the pandemic, with 47 budgeted officers, not 47 working officers, the department took 36,838 calls for service. So a drastic difference with less officers. Now, you guys probably all remember in '04, the city started the buyout process with eligible employees. And at the time, the department started a restructuring process. The department was downsized. Several bureaus were eliminated, including our Traffic Bureau. The department and other city employees back then were advised what we needed to do. Step up to the plate and do more with less. So I can tell you that the police officers here have absolutely done what was asked of them. They're taking more calls with less officers and have also inherited additional duties, like crossing guards. We had to send officers out every morning and every afternoon for crossing guard duty in traffic that we've been... Or I've been talking about is traffic complaints. We've been having these officers go on top of taking their calls, also doing the traffic complaints. Now, both of those duties were always handled by specialty departments, but as we know, they're no longer here. So to properly investigate all traffic speed complaints, I feel like we need to restart our traffic division. We need to add three officers to this unit to give... This would give citizens a department to complain or to report to. And they would have a department that would be able to do better follow-up with them. A traffic division would be able to dedicate the proper time, do actual traffic studies on intersections. Because the traffic officers would be enforcing violations, they'd actually be going out and... I know I'm not supposed to say this, but it is what it is. They'd be out generating funds that would pay for their position. Unfortunately, because the department is working at a bare bones crew, like I've explained and showed you tonight, we would actually, we would need council's help. We would need you to approve us being able to hire an additional three patrol officers to make this work. I feel like these three additional officers would provide us with additional tools to be able to successfully enforce and investigate all traffic complaints within the city. So that's what I wanted to show you guys, just so you had an idea of what is going on, how we handle them, how they're brought into us, and what we need, how I feel that we need to move forward and do a better job at. And I feel like the only way we can move forward and do the best job for the citizens is to restart our traffic division. And I feel like the only way to do that is to hire more officers. And I know it's not an easy task because, you know, we're having trouble hiring. And I know, you know, it's tough to pull money, you know, from a tree, but again, I feel like this is... If this is something that the citizens want done, I feel like this is really our best avenue to go. So if anybody has questions, concerns, comments, I'd be very happy to help explain.
Chief, there were actually, there were more people in the traffic division shortly before the buyout. And that happened to, they had a day shift radar operator, and then they had an afternoon shift radar operator who strictly did nothing but go out and run radar, write violations, and then would help out on other traffic-related calls. That's how I remember it, anyway. So anything for the chief as we get started here?
I've got a question for the chief.
Yeah.
You're going to go to council first, Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely.
You just indicated a couple of council meetings ago that the Police Department was evaluated, wasn't it, to see what their manpower was, what, three, four, five years ago? That evaluation never come up with any suggestions, or the valuation was what it is today for 43 officers? I mean, I'm just asking because we talked about that when we talked about the DPS evaluation. You had said something to the council about...
Right. And I didn't see the whole evaluation that they came up with, so I can't tell you for sure. I know that for a fact that he did say that we were working short-handed.
Okay.
But I don't know, like, the only recommendation I know he gave was that we needed to have a deputy chief. And that was his big thing when he walked out of here. But I think he was understanding that, or he wasn't understanding that we were working short. How he, you know, labeled where the shortage is, should be felt bad, I couldn't answer because I didn't see the whole report.
Okay. Well, that's what I was, through the mayor, that's what I was asking, chief. I was just curious because sometimes we do reports and the council should see them, okay, irregardless of how it's done. And that way, we have a chance to evaluate it. And now, if, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
You would need, you have a maximum of 43, so you need 46 then, right? Because you need three more for the traffic division, which would make the...
We're...
Remember, along?
We're currently budgeted for 47, so we would need to put our number up to 50.
Okay. Now, would those officers strictly be in traffic, or would they be pulled, like, you know, every day for crossing guard and everything? And what I'm saying is, if we decide to go that route, we would like to ensure that they go there only because of the fact that we're having some new problems. And that would ensure the safety of the citizens and also make it applicable to them, that they were always on the job, I guess.
I agree. But they would always be in the traffic unit. They'd be assigned to that. They wouldn't be answering to calls. But then, obviously, if we had a critical incident, sometimes had a shooter, we would have extra bodies on hand. But their job every day would be to enforce traffic and go to the complained areas and sit and observe and issue tickets and investigate. But that would be their primary assignment, would just be to do that.
Okay.
Chief.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Chief, do we have any crossing guards? Or is that...
We have no crossing guards. We went from, just in the last couple of years, we went from three crossing guards to no crossing guard. And it isn't that we're not, that the city hasn't posted or looking, you know, we've had it up for a long time. You know, with the odd hours and odd times, it's difficult to find a part-time person that's interested in that position. And, you know, it's hard to find somebody that works full-time, let alone a person that has odd hours like that. But it has been posted for a long time, and we just haven't had any interest in it.
Okay. Anything else for council, for the chief?
Through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Chief Waters, I want to thank you so much for all that information. There was a lot there that I did not know about. If we could go back to the crossing guard situation. I've never seen that posted on our employment opportunities.
It's been on there in the past. We just haven't had any luck with anybody applying for it. It may have been taken down because we haven't had anybody apply for it. I can investigate and find that out for you.
Okay. So those are budgeted for though, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we should put those back on our employment opportunities. The, I know you mentioned a SET program. What exactly is the SET program?
Our SET is our selective enforcement traffic. So officers go out outside of their work duties and go out and work usually about a four-hour block of time. And they'll go, you know, throughout the city, and all they're doing is enforcing traffic violations.
Okay.
That's assisted with us greatly. When our comSET was up working, we would send them into the high crime areas or we'd send them into, you know, the complaint areas that we get, you know, for traffic complaints.
Okay. And I have noticed, too, I don't see police officers just sitting like they used to. You know, like over there at Champagne and Dix, they would sit there. Even on Goddard, they would sit over here by the church at Goddard and Abbott. But from that call volume, I'm assuming there's no time for sitting.
Well, I think, you know, if you look at, they did issue 3,000 tickets during their work. I mean, they are out there enforcing violations, but, you know, maybe not to the... To the numbers that some would like to see. But to say that they're not doing, you know, what's expected, I would say that's not true. They're going above and beyond. They're doing an incredible job for the amount of guys that we have and the amount of work that they're putting in.
No, I'm just saying that we're not seeing them. We're used to seeing them, you know?
Yeah, and guys find their own, it's almost like their spots that they like to sit at, that they'll be successful at going. They'll move around, so they're all over the place. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for all that information. I really appreciate it. That was truly a lot. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work that they do. I'm glad that we took the time to do this because I don't like that Facebook is a primary source of information.
Yeah, we try not to use Facebook for much information at all. To be honest with you, about 99% of the information on there is false. People like to hide behind it and just, you know, gripe. But very rarely do those same people actually call us to complain or to say, hey, this is something I heard, you know, or, you know, I'm concerned about this. It's very rare that those same people are on Facebook, actually call and are cooperative with us for giving us any information. So we try not to, you know, like, I want to sound like it's fake news, but it's not very reliable. And we try to tell people not to, you know, that really isn't your avenue to find information.
Right.
Or to cast a page.
Your Honor, is it possible to try and find that report, that study report for the Police Department?
What was done during the time of the emergency manager, he was the one that issued that directive. And I think that it would, a copy would be... James, I would think that you would have a copy someplace in your office. Is that true?
I haven't run across it yet, but that's not to say it's not here. I just haven't dug too deep for it.
Got, but by the next council meeting, we should have information on that. Because it was, I mean, the city paid for it, or the state paid for it. I don't know which. But I know that there was, there was a copy out there. Just got to track it down, that's all. That was from, I think, 2014?
Sounds about right.
Yeah, 1314. And it was, Hawk was chief at that, Brian Hawk was chief at the time, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything more, Councilwoman Ross?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Anything else from council?
Yes, Your Honor, through the chair to the chief. Chief, could you put some kind of rough figure, and I say rough, but that's what I meant, about what it would take to put the three officers on, their cars, their equipment, their, you know, blah, blah, blah. I mean, you know where I'm going. Is there a rough...
I can read that here.
Get the council of what we're talking, just so we have a number to play with, you know what I'm saying? So we can look at what, you know, what we're talking about, if that's not too much trouble.
Absolutely. That makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, sir. Anything else from council before I open it up to the public?
Yes, through the chair, Your Honor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, chief. Thanks again for taking the time for this. And just so you know, I have the utmost respect for Lincoln Park Police. Every day you put on a uniform, you guys put your life on the line, so I appreciate that and for all you do. My biggest question and probably the most messages I get from residents, and you're probably going to really rise, but on no parking days, when the trash and sweeping is supposed to be taking place from 12:30 to 3:30, if you get a call on six cars that are parked in the street and are blocking the trash bins, what takes place when you get that call?
So if we get a call, a car is dispatched out there, and if he or she gets there and there's a violation, tickets are issued.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question through the chair.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
So, you know, where I live, I have a lot of the mini-bikes and I guess the ATV vehicles that come walking down the street and around the corners. And usually, it's younger kids, no helmets, no parents or anything. They suggest we do when we see that. I mean, if we call, they're gone. And I have real concerns. Every time I see that, my stomach just flips in that somebody is going to get seriously hurt.
So we have the same concerns that you do about it. I don't know why, I think we've talked about this a couple of times. I don't know why people all of a sudden think that it's okay to drive an ATV down the city streets or sidewalks. It's not. And when we see them, we tow them. And if we can issue, we will also issue them a ticket. We just towed another one last night or the night before. So we are out there. If we see them, we will take them. So, you know, we want people to understand that they're not allowed out in the streets. They're not street safe. And you're right. The majority of the people or the drivers that are on those are very young kids. And, you know, I think we all share the same fear that you do, that there's going to be a bad accident. But we are out there. We tow numerous of those vehicles, numerous of them.
So if you do see, you catch a bunch of kids on mini-bikes and you take the mini-bikes, but do the parents get any kind of involvement in it? Are they ticketed or anything? Or is it just the loss of the equipment that they're caught on?
Yeah, there's no ticket. If we, you know, depending on the scenario, there's no ticket for the parent. There's a possible ticket for the kid. And we tow the vehicle, which is a huge cost to the parent or owner.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. If we could stop sharing the screen for a moment? There we go. Is there anyone that has a question for the chief or wishes to be heard in reference to this? James, if you would unmute everyone, and we will take as many as we can in 35 minutes, so...
Everybody should be able to.
Okay. I think somebody was just, if you could go again?
Hi, this is Lee Farrell. I'm one of the moderators on the residence page. I'm brand new to the, well, to being a moderator. But yes, like Maureen was saying, there have been a lot of mini-bikes and quad runners, that type of thing, going up and down our street as well. I'm on Lejeune. And we're, is there something, chief, that we can do to help you or any, or the police for that matter, as far as identifying them, or should we videotape them? Because like Maureen said, they do it and then they're gone. And it doesn't give you guys a chance to stop what you're doing and come over here.
So, yeah, any information that you have, you know, we had one where it was something similar. Every time that the complainants would call, our officers would go out there, they'd be gone. But because, you know, the people were, they finally were able to say, listen, these kids live in this, you know, we believe it was one of the three houses that they thought they lived in. So officers kind of paid closer attention. They ended up catching the kids and ended up, you know, telling their stuff and, you know, confiscating their stuff. So any information that we can narrow down to figure out where some of these violators were, that we can actually enforce and try to do something. So you can call and give us information, and we could try to do our best to address it. Like I said, I think, you know, we're all on the same page here. We all have the same fears and concerns that you all do about these kids riding these because, you know, they haven't received, most of them haven't received a traffic or a safety or a driver's training courses, so they really don't know enough. But some of them, unfortunately, they just don't care. So we need to stop this if we're out of hand. I agree. And we are out there, and we're trying to do our best. We need to find a council for our traffic division with, you know, these types of complaints because we're right to a traffic division where we could, they could, you know, make their list of investigations to accomplish. So, yeah, absolutely, Ms. Farrell, if you have information, we'd love to hear about it. And email me or the deputy chief, and we can do our best to get it accomplished for you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Farrell, do you have anything else?
No, that'll do it.
All right. It's not just the kids that are on the mini-bikes, by the way, and the ATVs, or a lot of adults that are out there doing it also. Okay. Has anyone else wish to be heard? James, do we have them all muted, or are they muted by choice?
They're all muted by choice.
Okay. Okay, is there, again, we're opening up for citizen communication with this? Does anyone wish to be, wish to be heard? Okay. Go back to council. Any final words on, or thoughts on the meeting today, or if everyone's all set?
Thank you, Chief Waters.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Thanks for listening. I know it was kind of a long, dragged-out, lot of numbers to throw at you. But I do really feel like this is the best for us to move forward. And I'll try to get those numbers for you guys, and I'll send them out to you, and then we can relook at it. And like I said, we're all ears open. We want to do the best thing for everybody. I feel like this would be a good move for the department and the city.
How does, Chief, how does one request the radar trailer, or the speed devices that we have to be in their neighborhood? we have to be in their neighborhood?
We have the older trailer that we have that's still functional, and then we just received the new one that can be affixed to any street sign. That one's going to, it's a smaller unit, but it's able to measure a lot of information, give us a lot of data. So that'll help us with a lot of complaints. We have two.
Well, how do they, how do they go about it?
If somebody has a complaint, the citizen has a complaint or a concern in their area, they can email me or they can email the deputy chief, and then we will, we will get to them. Obviously, with, you know, with two, we can't have them out on everybody's street, but we will get them out there. We try to rotate them around. We'll get them out last weekend.
Can they call the non-emergency number for the 3-1-1800?
They can call that number if they have something that we need to address immediately. The dispatch will send a car out.
Oh, I was just looking for, I mean, other than just an email to yourself or the deputy, how they could go about and get a speed enforcement trailer in there if there's... Yeah, never mind. I'll think of a different, different approach. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, then the special meeting. I guess I, I need a motion for this one since it is a regular, a regular meeting. So I want to turn a motion to adjourn.
Sure. Sure.
All right. And then court call the roll?
Officer Porson Salsito?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mirkaerts.
Yes. And thanks, chief, for putting everything together and for being here.
Good for her.
And everyone, we will see you shortly. Meeting adjourned at 7:02.